Good evening. This regular meeting of January 9th, 2023 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
All right, so we have some visitors from Hoover that will help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on in. You can introduce yourself and say your school and grade.
My name is Kenton and I'm in fifth grade at Hoover Elementary.
My name is Braylon and I am in fifth grade at Hoover Elementary.
My name is Annabelle and I'm a fifth grade student at Hoover Elementary.
My name is Malia and I'm a fifth grader at Hoover Elementary.
My name is Jackson Crenti. I'm a fifth grader at Hoover Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the annual organizational meeting of December 12th, 2022, and the special meeting on January 3rd, 2023, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the annual organizational meeting of December 12th, 2022, and the special meeting of January 3rd, 2023, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. So that brings us to board salutes. I believe there are three board salutes out there. Ms. Whitman, do you want to start?
Sure. I will start with the weather that we had with the delay of school. So we have a board salute that goes to our transportation team for their work last Wednesday when we experienced firsthand how unpredictable Iowa weather can be. Well, road conditions were acceptable early in the morning. They quickly turned icy after buses were out on the road and after the time of district is able, and after the time the district is able to adjust the schedule for the day. Our bus drivers, bus attendants, and the entire transportation team handled their morning routes with great care to ensure that all of our students made it to school safely. The timing of the ice onset was at the worst possible time, but we were able to navigate with our expert team. We're also thankful for the flexibility and patience of our families who were impacted by some buses running late or unable to access certain stops on time. Great work to all involved in navigating this challenging weather in the mornings. And thank you, Amy Hawkins, for your part early in the morning to make those decisions.
Early, they become pretty good friends in the morning.
You just won't have to deal with that anymore.
Yeah, we're having great weather now.
Thank you.
I have one. Let's see, a board salute goes to the Prescott Family Involvement Network and Prescott Elementary School students and staff for their outstanding work bringing back the school's soup luncheon fundraiser. It was really great to see such outstanding support from across our community supporting Prescott, and it was also wonderful to see students practicing their communication skills as they were serving the soup and the rest of the meal, showing off their performance skills as they performed for those in attendance, and sharing their artwork as part of the silent auction. So kudos to all involved in bringing this flagship event back to Prescott for the first time since COVID-19.
Thank you. I just texted the president of the FIN organization to ask her what their total was, and she said it was, off the top of her head, over $9,000. So that's an awesome amount of money for the Prescott school.
And I too have a board salute. A board salute goes to our students competing recently in the first LEGO League and first Tech Challenge Robotics Competition. The team from Marshall Elementary School qualified for the first state first LEGO League competition, which will be held on January 28th in Ames. Also, we had four middle school teams compete in the first tech challenge, and so we had good representation from all three middle schools. And big kudos to our high school robotics team for visiting all of the elementary schools and middle schools. And I had the privilege of attending the first tech challenge with my son, who attends Washington Middle School, and it was really good to see all three of the middle schools have representation. And the thing that really impacted me the most was the coaches and teachers. Too often, we don't talk about the coaches and teachers who volunteer their time to give those students those amazing experiences. And to see a student run back after the event, say, "We did it," and the teacher was super excited and gave them a hug, that was real impactful, and I took a picture of that, and that was the teachers from Jefferson Middle School. And so, big kudos to all the teachers and volunteers who mentor, guide, or support all of our students in the club activities.
Thank you, Mr. Sancy. Any other board salutes that folks have? All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're going to start our open forum and visitors forum with an update from our principal of Hoover Elementary, Kathleen Willock.
Good evening, everyone. So, talking about what's going well at Hoover School, so just a little bit about Hoover. This year, we have 306 students, pre-K through five. We have a really diverse student population, which hasn't always been the case for Hoover, but definitely has been moving in that direction over the last number of years. We are a CEP school. Fifty-three of our 306 students, so about 17%, receive ELL services. Their first language is not English. And 27 of our 306 students, or 9%, qualify as McKinney-Vento or as homeless. So we do have a diverse population that we're really proud of. So the things that are going well at Hoover and make things special there, the people, I think, are the biggest thing that make Hoover what it is. So what's going well is we are now fully staffed, so yay. Our staff is passionate, they're focused, they're dedicated, they're hardworking, and they're team players. So I can't say enough about what a wonderful staff we have. We've really been working on collective efficacy as part of our school plan and working together to meet the needs of our students, knowing that it's not any one of us that's responsible for student success or for student growth, but our combined efforts as a team. So everyone really does go above and beyond to do what they can to meet the needs of our kids, and that doesn't just include teachers, paraprofessionals, our office staff, our kitchen staff, and our custodial staff. Our custodian, Wayne Williams, is a great example. He goes out of his way. He's done check-ins for us for behavior, really checks in on kids that he's seen that have struggled and makes a personal connection. So it really is everybody in the building. So we've been, we have been maintaining positivity. I really like what Amy brought about what's going well in doing this here. We have started each gathering that we have each staff meeting with what's going well, and I just think it helps maintain that positive focus. So that's been great for us. Our students always give us our best and are consistently working on making progress from where they are. Our families give us trust and support us, so we are really lucky to have that. Our community, we were one of the beneficiaries of the high school robotics team coming to Hoover, and it was a great experience for our fifth grade kids. So we appreciate that. We're humbled by the generosity of community members. We received a generous donation from Hope Church to make sure that kids had coats, snowpans, et cetera. We've been lucky enough to receive support from Dubuque Foundation for Public Schools through Judy Chanley Grants, the most recent one, to buy books to promote and support our social-emotional learning curriculum. So that was pretty exciting. In addition, we have been working with that social-emotional piece. We've been working on implementing Second Step. Teachers are finding it really helpful and successful, and having those extra books helps us take Second Step beyond just that morning meeting and help kids flourish with those social-emotional foundational skills throughout the day. Post-COVID this year, yeah, last year, yes, but this year, we're being able to have families back in the building, which is a great experience for us. So first for us this year, we had the first assemblies we've had in three years. It's been nice to be together as a school community. The first music concert that we've had in three years is coming up at the end of this month, the January 24th. And the last, this year in October, we had our second annual cultural fair. We did the first one in May of last school year. And as we evaluated the data afterwards, we really felt like in October, we normally do an open house, and the traditional open house with just inviting families in wasn't getting the same draw that it had maybe gotten in the past, so we combined it with that cultural fair in the fall, which was a great, which we had a great turnout for. So we invited all families in the building to share if they'd like to at this event and have information about their culture. They could bring samples of clothing, of food, they could do presentations. And over the past two years, we've had presentations from the Marshall Islands, Guatemala, Vietnam, Pakistan, Trinidad and Tobago, the Sioux Nation, Great Britain, Italy, and the Philippines. So we do have a lot of diversity, and I think we're really proud of that. It makes us who we are. So we've had great feedback from our community about that, and we're going to continue it as an annual event. So overall, we're really proud of our school community, our positive relationships, we're passionate about working together to meet the needs of kids and help them make progress towards their individual goals, our school goals, and our district goals. So I'm going to sign off today with you, as I do every day from our morning announcements, saying it's a great day because we're, because you are here and we're all here together. Thank you, and remember, we are Hoover and you matter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love those updates. So anyone else who wishes to address the board can do so at this time. We ask that you state your full name and your connection to the district, and that you limit your comments to three minutes using our handy timer.
Terry Stewart, Dubuque resident and taxpayer. And my concern is that the governor is making a very strong and hard push to take taxpayer money and give it to private schools. And in view of the fact that the legislature hasn't even kept up with inflation over the last several years for public school funding, it looks to me like a very crippling and harmful direction for the, for the state to be going. So I'm wondering if you have taken a position on, on that exercise, and if so, how you would make that known.
Thanks, Terry. We typically don't respond in public comment, but we've heard your comments, so.
We can under other items at the end of the question.
Other items. We'll get to it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to our Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Mr. Prohaska, our new chair of that committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Just, we met last Tuesday, January 3rd. Before I go to make some of the motions, I'll just kind of recap, just short abbreviated things that were discussed. We'll be providing new Hewlett-Packard computers for our sixth graders and ninth graders, and it's noteworthy to, that the discount having HP as our sole provider is very significant as far as the cost of these units. We also approved getting a flat panel carts and flat panel display for a couple of elementary schools. And notable, we are getting a new, additional firewall system to prevent our IT system from being attacked, hacked, whatever you want to call it. So that's, we need to do whatever we can to prevent that from happening, as it has happened to some school districts. We had an update on senior high renovation. It's about 70% complete. There's supply chain issues as far as the auditorium goes, but they do plan on having it ready by March 100th year celebration at senior. Then we, we did also get an update on the Hempstead interaccount replacement. It's pretty much complete. Then we have some, some projects that are out for bid. I'll mention those a little bit later. And we got an update on the middle school consolidation from our superintendent, that the report will be given at our February facilities committee meeting. And we also had an update from Synergistic regarding our energy savings program, and it's noteworthy, thanks to Rob Powers and his group, that Kevin reported that about 75% of the UVM schools had frozen pipes or some type of freezing issues during the cold spell, and we did not. So that is great. Thank you, Rob. I will now move on to make some motions here. I move the Board of Education approve the budget, the request to the School Budget Review Committee for a modified supplemental amount and supplemental aid for the 2023-24 dropout prevention program in the amount of $4,973,679 based upon the formula and match for expenditures necessary to implement the 2023-24 at-risk and dropout prevention programs.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified supplemental amount and supplemental aid for the 2023-24 dropout prevention program in the amount of $4,973,679 based on the formula and match for expenditures necessary to implement the 2023-24 at-risk and dropout prevention program plans. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next up on the agenda is a motion to approve the contract with Premier Furniture and Equipment. I'm asking the board to table the motion at this time. The district did not receive the necessary paperwork with this contract. The item will be moved to the February meeting. I move the Board of Education table the executive construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Premier Furniture and Equipment for the senior high Phase II furniture fixtures and equipment bid package number two until the February 13th board meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education table the executed construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Premier Furniture and Equipment for the senior high school Phase II furniture fixtures and equipment bid package number two until the February 13th board meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Certificate of Substantial Completion Number One on the Hempstead High School Kitchen Renovation Project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Certificate of Substantial Completion Number One on the Hempstead High School Kitchen, School Kitchen Renovation Project. Is there any discussion?
I think this is, we've been waiting for that freezer for a long time.
It's been a while.
I think it's over.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Jim Geese Commercial Roofing for the Roosevelt Middle School Roof Replacement Project in the amount of $974,153.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Jim Geese Commercial Roofing for the Roosevelt Middle School Roof Replacement Project in the amount of $974,153. Is there any discussion?
I think this is the original roof, or the most of the roof is the original roof. It's 18 years old, I believe, correct? And we're getting a thicker fabric, this one, more guaranteed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract bonds and certificates of insurance with Tricon Construction Group for the Eisenhower Elementary School Mechanical Replacement Project in the amount of $3,078,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract bonds and certificate of, certificate of insurance with Tricon Construction Group for the Eisenhower Elementary School Mechanical Replacement Project in the amount of $3,078,000. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. I believe Mr. Kelleher is going to give us some information.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Hawkins. There's three points in the budget packet tonight that I'd like to bring to your attention. First one is on pages 76 through 82 of your packet has the district revenues. In that, all of the district revenues that we budget are at 50% or near 50% or exceeding that amount, except for the school nutrition fund. If you look at that one, that one's at about 35%. The reason for that is when we do our budgeting, which is in the spring, we base it somewhat on the current year taking place. So that's what we did with this budget. And as you know, last year, at that time, the government had allowed for all students to eat free, and it also increased our reimbursement rate on meals. So that elevated the amount of income that we had last year. Again, at that point in time, we expected, or we hoping for, no change in that philosophy. As you know, that did not take place. They went back to the old rules for this school year. So our budget reflects that, is, that's why it's only at 35%, even though we're 50% through the year. Now, the second point is, on the good side of that, our nutrition fund expenditures are still slightly less than our total revenue for the nutrition fund as of December 31st. So it still has a small surplus for the year in it, so we're not overly worried about that decline in revenue at this point in time, but we will continue to watch that. And then the third point, topic tonight, is on the sales tax fund and the expenditures. If you look at that, the budget amount is slightly overspent by about $700,000. That is because this full amount of the senior contract is shown in the encumbrances, which drives that budget amount out. That contract won't be fulfilled until probably September of '24, so that's two more fiscal years that we're going to go through. So all of those costs are in that encumbrance. That's why it shows a negative amount. Any questions on any of that or any other items that you saw in the packet? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Back to our motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Prohaska, for that committee update, which brings us to Educational Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley.
Thanks, Dr. Parks. Happy to report on our, our meeting of January 4th. We met and had the same, typically, two parts to the agenda. The first part is in educational programs featuring some element of our strategic plan, and I'm really enjoying that. Superintendent Hawkins, thank you for that format. I think that's great. So this time, we were focused on priority initiative number one, Student Connections, and that reads, "Increase student connections through the addition of new varied extracurricular activities with emphasis on the addition of culturally relevant activities, clubs, and organizations." So we were happy to hear from three of our district staff members. Joe Maloney, who is the Director of Activities and Athletics, De'Er Littleton, who is the Director of Equity, and Jawanza Evans, who is the Equity and HR Specialist, working in that area as well. So in terms of student connections, Mr. Maloney reported to us that they have recently conducted an anonymous student survey at both high schools, which looks at acquiring feedback from students about what clubs, what activities are they participating in currently, and if they aren't participating, what kind of barriers exist to prevent them from participating. It's interesting to, to hear Mr. Maloney report on the two major things that they, students represented as barriers. One was transportation, and the other is jobs, having their own jobs that they need to be tending to. So overall, they're looking at different club offerings and extracurricular offerings for specific groups of students that, that students might be interested in. So Ms. Evans brought us an update on the Committee on the New Black Student Union Clubs at both high schools. Club has been renamed Black Excellence Association, and its purpose is to advance black culture in the district through educational discussions, events, workshops, mentorships, and to develop the community among black students. De'Er Littleton discussed the efforts they're making to build a collaborative relationship with the high schools, our high schools, and with our local colleges, particularly with Lawrence and the University of Dubuque, which the board was very pleased to, to learn about that, that new effort. De'Er told us that, or Jawanza said, I believe, that more students are, the more students are engaged, the more we know that they're likely to be successful academically in school. So what a great way to go about trying to build, actually trying to build mentorships between the college students in local area and our high school students who are participating in that organization. So we're very pleased to hear about that. Mr. Maloney also reported that the district has applied for the renewal of the Iowa 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant. That's the grant that, that makes possible our middle school LEAP program. If you're not familiar with LEAP, it provides spectacular after-school programming opportunities that are so enriching for our middle school kids. And we, Joe said that we would find out in February or early March if that's been renewed for our district. We certainly hope so. So after that, we turn to our policies section, where we reviewed three policies. Every month, we have a chunk of policies, a number that we take a look at to review. We get staff recommendations for revisions. Board has discussion on that at the committee meeting, and then we reach an updated version of our policies. This time, we, we looked at three policies. Number 5301, fundraising by and for school-approved organizations. Policy 5503, reporting child and dependent adult abuse and neglect. And policy 6209, minimum school day for high school students. Those three policies, once they were approved by the board in the committee process, came tonight and were approved on the consent agenda. So we're happy about that. Our next meeting is February 7th at 4:30, right here in the boardroom. We welcome any community members, any staff members who would like to come and, and listen as the board considers its agenda throughout that meeting. A lot of, a lot of good work and good discussion happens during that, so we welcome you. That's it, no motions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, for that update.
Sure.
That brings us to new business.
I move the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Day and authorize the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Day and authorize the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Sorry, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So I will read the proclamation. Excuse me. Whereas on Sunday, January 15, 2023, our community will celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., beginning with a gathering at Jackson Park at 12:15 p.m. and a march to St. Luke's Methodist Church to witness the awards in the annual NAACP tribute contest. And whereas on Monday, January 16, the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration will be held at the Grand River Center with breakfast beginning at 9 a.m. and the celebration beginning at 7:30 a.m. featuring keynote speaker Antonio Mausen. Did I say that right? Presenting deep change, rediscovering connection. And whereas, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the King Center is urging people to reject all forms of hatred, bigotry, and prejudice, while pledging to do everything in their capacity to make America and the world a place where equality and justice, freedom, and peace will grow and flourish. And whereas, we invite all citizens to join in keeping his dream alive by joining in the celebrations, dedicating their lives to creating the community of Dr. King's dream and pledging a nonviolent way of life in their dealings with all people. Now, therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim January 15 and 16, 2023, as days of great celebration in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., signed this ninth day of January 2023. It's very exciting to have the celebration back in person. And hopefully, people can go to that, get tickets, and have a good breakfast and hear an amazing speaker.
The speaker is, I believe, on the faculty at the University of Dubuque.
All right. A great event.
I move the Board of Education allow student number 808802 to reenter the Dubuque Community School District effective January 17, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education allow student number 808802 to reenter the Dubuque Community School District effective January 17, 2023. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to board member or administrative issues. And I do want to say, appreciate Mr. Stewart's comments and raising awareness to the funding issue related that's, you know, possibly coming to us with the legislative session starting. Our board in the spring did unanimously pass a resolution stating our opposition to efforts to institute a voucher system in the state of Iowa. Our position's not changed since April on that issue. And so we want to make sure to remind folks in the community, folks, you know, out there, that this is a good time to contact representatives in Des Moines to state your support for public schools and public funding going towards public schools. There is going to be some advocacy information that'll be posted on the district website in the coming days. If you need contact information for your legislators or you just want to see some key talking points or even synopses of what the, what the concerns and what the issues are. So more communication about that will come. But just to kind of address Mr. Stewart's requests, like that's at least one thing that we've been doing as a board or that we have done, as well as other advocacy that individual board members have done.
Thank you.
I too would like to thank Mr. Stewart for coming and speaking regarding this issue. This potentially down the road